All right, I'm going to call the meeting to order. It's Tuesday, February the 6th, 2018. Couple of minutes after 7:00 PM, I'm going to call a special meeting of the Friendswood Zoning Board of Adjustment to consider an application for a variance to allow an encroachment on a landscape buffer on the side yard at 2210 South Friendswood Drive. Before we get into our official meeting tonight, I want to recognize Ron Dyer, who has some words he'd like to say.
I'd like to take just a minute. Recently, just before Christmas, we lost a long attending member on this board, Delvin Kendrick. Delvin had been a HPD, a Houston Police Officer, as it turns out, for 43 years. I talked to his wife. Forty-three years, five months, and one day. And then he retired, and then he served here with Friendswood with honor. Seldom, as far as I know, never missed a meeting with the zoning board of adjustments. And served honorably, always here, excellent board member, always had great questions. And I just wanted to take a moment and honor him and honor his service, and certainly let his family know we always did appreciate his work here. So, thank you, and thank you for letting me take that moment.
All right, I want to take a moment to explain the procedure tonight. I believe our last meeting, we had similar requests, so you probably know what's going on, but let's go ahead and make it clear. First, we'll hear from the city representative, will offer us a history of the request and why the city chose to deny it. Then the petitioner or the petitioner's representative can take the podium and tell us why they think we should approve their request. Then we'll have public comments from anyone who wants to be recognized and give a statement either for or against the proposal. After the public comments are made, the public input will be closed, and only the board members will have the opportunity to speak or ask questions. We may ask questions of the witnesses and gather additional information, and eventually deliberate and vote on the application. By Texas law, a supermajority is required to approve the application. That means you need four of the five members to approve the application or it's denied, even if you have a majority of three. If you're not satisfied with the board's decision, the only way to appeal the board's decision is to file a lawsuit in the county court where the property is located. It's a very technical issue with a very short timeframe. I would recommend that you speak with a lawyer if you decide you want to pursue an appeal. This is a quasi-judicial proceeding. The city keeps records, including audio and video records that are available online. So, we'll ask that all persons who will be speaking before the board tonight to be sworn in. So, anyone that attends to speak tonight, would you please rise and raise your right hand? And do each of you swear or affirm that you'll tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in your testimony tonight? Thank you, you may be seated. If you speak tonight, we'll ask you to go to the podium over here, so you can be recorded on the microphone, so we'll get a good record of the meeting. And even after you've spoken, if we ask you questions, please go back up there, so we can hear and your testimony can be recorded. All right, I've already summarized the application. Let's hear from the city representative, who will be speaking for the city tonight.
Good evening. Brian Rowan, Chief Building Official. Brief history on 2210 South Friendswood Drive. Prior to the application, we staff had met with the applicants, laid out all the guidelines and requirements for this particular lot. We received permit application and denied it, and gone through the previous zoning board of adjustments, and turned down their variance requests. Shortly after that, they turned in a new site plan with significant changes on it, and there was still one issue, that it still encroached into approximately 1,837 square feet into a landscape buffer. At that point, we denied the application again, and it has been referred to the board.
Is that all you need? All right, can we have the applicant or the representative of the applicant to speak then?
Good evening. My name is Mona Miller. I'm with Infinity Real Estate Group, and thank you all so much for giving us your time tonight. I know everybody has other things to be doing. I actually represented the buyers in purchasing this property, and we did go through our development meetings. We did do a lot of due diligence up front. The property did have to be rezoned. We went through and rezoned the property to neighborhood commercial. It fit all the regulations of that zoning category, and it seemed to fit the use as well, without being intrusive to the surrounding property owners. So, we felt like we had done all of those things correctly. The problem we're running into now is that the property is narrow. Obviously, it's a long, narrow piece of property. So, when we originally submitted for a driveway permit to TechDOT, they actually denied a driveway permit completely off of 518. So, they basically said, "Your entrance is going to have to be off of Old Road." So, we went back. Any of the franchises on these larger service stations, convenience stores, want you to have that entrance off your main frontage road. They require it for their franchises. So, we went back to them, tried to work through a couple of things, tried to do a shared driveway with the neighbor, and just couldn't work those things out. So, our last resort with TechDOT was to do a right turn-in-only. So, we understood their concern. They didn't want traffic coming out of Old Road turning left, and then people coming out of this business turning left, and, you know, cause the accidents there with so much traffic going different directions. So, the thing that we got through with TechDOT was that they would give us a right turn-in-only on the very property line of this property, and then all of our exits would be off of Old Road. So, we have that approval. Took us about nine months to get everything through TechDOT, not realizing that that was going to cause an issue with the landscape buffer on this property, and it is that one, I guess, west property line there. So, we are required to have a 15-foot landscape buffer. And basically, the way the radius of the driveway turns is that they encroach about six and a half feet of their concrete into that 15-foot buffer, but we can't relocate the driveway because we can't get it approved through TechDOT. It has to be on that property line. So, we've gone through, they've reduced the size of their building, we've moved around some parking spaces, corrected some other issues that they had with the property, and tried to kind of rearrange things to make this fit the best way that it could. We do still have the green space. The architect is here. I believe he said he has about 10% to 12% more green space than what is required. But if you have questions or anything, we can definitely, you know, ask him to clarify that. But our main problem with this, and we don't feel like it's a self-created issue because it's so limited by TechDOT to only have that right turn-in driveway right on the property line. Thank you.
Thank you. And we have an architect that's also speaking on behalf?
Yes, good evening. My name's Brian Baca. And yes, as per our last meeting, I understand that we were asking for a little bit encroachment concerning the landscaping buffer zones, a building setback line, which we were also trying to manipulate somewhat, to be able to fit the property, the building that we were wanting to develop here for the site that was, had gone through all this rezoning, all this time to get approvals from the city somewhat, as well as from TechDOT. Now, during this point, of course, I understand the denial. We've gone through, and I've reduced the building quite a bit, due to the fact that we have not just had to reduce some of the parking lot area to increase and create the buffer zones as is required, which we have everywhere now, instead of, in a few places here and there. Everything is now to the requirements as for the city landscape setbacks. The only thing that we're required right now to try to get from you, like Ms. Mona said, was because of the TechDOT driveway. That comes in at an angle. It's a directional-only driveway, which we will be able to get the fuel truck in. All the delivery trucks that will be coming into the site will be entering from that driveway, as well as, of course, some of the retail. Now, it's directional, so that we can keep any traffic from coming out of the site, to want to turn left onto Friendswood, because we have a dangerous curve there, that, you know, it's a safety issue, which brings up a lot of this. Now, because of that, we now have adjusted everything, moved everything back, lost a little bit of building space, like I said, due to the requirements of the lost parking spaces we did not have for that building square footage. So, we reduced that to make sure that we had our parking as per ordinance. We've got all our setbacks. We've even tucked back in now a proposed dumpster, an enclosed dumpster, which was a little bit unsightly, I thought, where the city was requesting us to possibly put it. We've now tucked it back in between the two areas where I've reduced the building square footage. So, now it's going to look a lot nicer. Things will be very pleasant out there. We have, like I said, the majority of the landscaping buffers, the building setbacks are all set. There is nothing encroaching, other than where we've got the required driveway coming into the property, which we desperately need. Now, this is something that I think will either make this project feasible or not, because of the fact that we have to have driveway there. And with that in mind, we have no choice but to encroach a little bit on that, the buffer zone. Now, the only thing we're planning on encroaching with that buffer zone is a little bit of pavement, about five and a half feet, a linear length down that buffer, and it's only up to a certain point. After that, we have all of the buffer zone there taken care of, and no issues with sidewalk or anything else whatsoever. So, that's where we stand right now. So, we, you know, good possibility to get that. It will make things easier for us. We can move forward. I can then go ahead and continue getting our approvals through the drainage district, which we've been basically waiting on, you know, our site to be able to set, so that we know we'll have approvals without any conflicting coordination between the two.
All right. Thank you. Thank you for your time. I appreciate it. Is there anyone else speaking on behalf of the application, that's, I guess, speaking on behalf of the applicant? Is that it, Ms. Miller? Is that all you intended to hear?
Sorry, I forgot to mention this. We did work with the city as we were going through the TechDOT process, and they were super helpful in trying to help us to be able to get that driveway. We did have a letter of support for that driveway on 518. At the time, I don't think anybody, you know, we didn't know the overall layout or what those consequences were, but we did have the city support moving forward and applying for those permits and everything through TechDOT for that driveway.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, let's move on to the public comment then. Is there anyone from the public that wants to speak on behalf of this application? Yes, sir. Can we have your name, please, sir?
Difficult to understand whatever they're trying
Sir, can we have your name, please?
Leo Campos.
Mr. Campos? Okay, go ahead.
I don't understand exactly what they're trying to do. Normally, I would like to see drawings showing this driveway, this parking lot, what the TXDOT says, okay, as far as the driveway. Normally, in meetings, I've been here before, there are drawings showing, and I don't see anything.
Do you, sir, do you have any other objections, other than the fact that you haven't seen the drawings? Why don't you go ahead, sir, and sit down and look at the drawing if you want to, and I'll call you back up in a few minutes, all right?
All I can say is it's hard for me to make a decision based on a drawing that you need a magnifying glass to see.
Okay. Is there anything else you want to say? All right. Is there anyone else, anyone else that wants to make a public comment, either for or against this application?
My name is Larry Tilger. I live in the property, have the property just to the right of this property, and I'm abutting the easement that they're want to
Is that on the north side?
Yeah. I'm toward the park.
Yes, sir.
But I have a problem with, you know, encroaching on me for five feet, because if I, if I were to, you know, breeze, get my property rezoned commercial, are they going to let me move five feet closer to this property? And so, I have a problem with, you know, making variance for this one, when, you know, you make everybody else follow the rules. My other comment is, and of course, this doesn't directly affect this meeting, but they're planning on draining this across my property. So, I have a real problem with that. I know that doesn't affect this meeting, but I would like for you all to take that in consideration for ruling on this. Thank you.
All right. Is there anyone else from the public who would like to speak regarding this application? Come on, sir.
Hi, my name is Marcus Rives. I'm a local designer. I live here in Friendswood. I grew up here. I've literally done hundreds of buildings in Friendswood, several commercial properties on 518, 2351, 528. I've had to comply with all the city's zoning ordinances with every building I've done. I've never once come to this board asking for a variance. The city's always been helpful in walking me through that. Sometimes you just don't meet the requirements that the city has set up. And I feel like if you've grant a variance for five and a half feet of concrete into the landscape buffer, I had a building just a couple of years ago where we were denied all of that. You know, we had to change everything, we had to change our parking, we had to add stucco to the building. It's not even on 2351, we're in the major thoroughfares, but we still had to comply because it's in the entry overlay district. And these guys are part of that, too. They're asking for a variance of 1,837 square feet. That's larger than my first house. That's a lot of square footage. And they mentioned before, at the last meeting, that we needed another gas station. Well, there's five gas stations within two miles. There's 15 within five miles that I counted, not to mention the strip center and all our vacant strip centers we already have. I don't see where there is a hardship to grant them a variance when we already have these items close by. The city's very clear in the landscape ordinances and subdivision ordinances and codes of what we can and can't do, and clearly, they're asking to break those agreements with the city. And I just think you guys ought to take in consideration the hundreds of people that come through and have to follow the rules. So, that's all I have to say.
All right. Thank you, sir. Anyone else wishes to speak? Mr. Campos, did you want to say something else? You're done?
I want to take the drawing home. I'm not going to say anything, whether yes or no, until I study the drawing. I'm an engineer. Looking at this, I cannot say, I cannot tell anything with this. They're showing me a drawing, I'm not going to sit here and study that drawing, okay?
All right.
I studied the drawing on my own time.
Okay. All right, thank you. All right, if there's no one else who wishes to speak, we will close the public comments at this time and begin deliberations. Is there any board members who have questions or comments?
I actually have two questions. The first I'd like to address to the representative of the owners. I know that we had done some reconfiguring of the site plan since our last endeavor here last month. What would the net effect of this project be if this variance were not granted? Do we know the answer to that question?
Yes, the problem, several things, actually. The franchise requires the driveway off of 518. TechDOT will only give us a driveway off of 518 if it is this right turn-only, directly on the property line. Their concern is that it would get too close to Old Road if it went any further over. So, it definitely affects the project.
So, if there were, for example, no franchises allowed, based on the fact that we wouldn't have any direct access from driveways off of 518, what does that do to the project if there are no franchise options there?
It would probably completely kill the project, because they are looking to put a nice franchise in there. They, it would definitely kill the project as far as that franchise goes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Go ahead and stay up there a minute, Ms. Miller. Does anyone else have questions? I just don't want you to run back and forth.
Okay, no problem.
I have one quick question. Seems like y'all done a lot of work over a long period of time. Do you have any idea of how much funds have been put into this project already?
I don't know monetarily, no. We started working on this project probably last September, September 2016. So, we actually went under contract to purchase the property last November. Didn't get any response back from TechDOT until at least the end of January 2017. So, it's been a long time coming. It's been a long time in the works, and we felt like we went through all the processes that we needed to go through, and really did try not to apply for variances. I understand variances are not for every property. They should be unique to a property, something that truly is a hardship. This one unfortunately has an odd shape and is just really narrow at the front. So, we felt like we did our homework. We just did not foresee this.
All right, thank you. Yep, before you leave. Excuse me. Again, I realize you have a right turn access only off of 518, and obviously, that's going to be a one-way entrance only, correct?
Correct.
How is that going to be controlled?
It's the shape of it. I don't know if you've seen these. We have a few of them. I'm trying to think of where there is one in Friendswood, but it's narrow, somewhat narrow. Now, it has to be large enough to allow for the 18-wheelers to come in, but it is specifically shaped to only bring traffic into it, and you should not ever have anybody going out the other way and trying to cut across. It's very specific to the shape of it. Go ahead.
I've got something to add to that as well. The driveway itself is going to have signage painted on the entry of the driveway that says entrance only. It will be directional, and there will be directional arrows painted on the pavement itself that shows that there is only inflow direction allowed traffic wise in there. And like she said, it's only 20 feet wide, which only allows for a single traffic flow. It has to be 24 minimum in order to allow a double flow of traffic through. So, this right here, yes, sir.
No, one other question, and maybe I'm missing something. It's a right turn lane. What about traffic crossing and coming across from the opposite direction on 518? Are they going to have to cut across 518?
Well, okay, according to TechDOT, they would have to wait for traffic there, and if they wanted something done, they would have us put in a left turn lane in the center there. However, that's controlled by TechDOT, so that I really could not tell you. I highly doubt that they're going to be able to make a left turn there because of the traffic and the speed limit, which is, I believe, 45 miles an hour coming around to that location. You would not be able to make that turn in there, sir. So, I
And I realize this isn't your purview, but is there currently a double yellow strip there?
I believe so. I believe there is double yellow strip there dividing that
Dividing the road?
Yes, sir.
Which means you're technically not supposed to cross there.
Correct. Now, if there is a double turn, or if there is a center turn lane there, which I would have to go back to double check to make sure
I was going to ask, is that where it's divided? Is there a center turn lane there?
There is. Therefore, traffic flow can slow down, and they would have to wait. But it's unreal feasible.
I couldn't remember if it was double wide there.
But the driveway is literally raised curbs on either side, so it wouldn't be where somebody could just drive over those lines and come out. It's literally
I'm talking about entering from across the
Right, right.
So, you had to make a left turn lane into
Yes.
I'm sorry, this gentleman here, if you wanted to step up to the podium, if you had something to add to that? I'm not sure. We're going to introduce this and give me information about this road, I'm thinking. Have you, no?
I haven't been sworn in.
Okay, then, I'm sorry, we can't take
Well, may I be sworn in?
No, I'm sorry. And we've already closed the public portion. I apologize.
I'll inform these gentlemen that they've got a problem. That 20-foot
Well, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Thank you. I apologize.
We should assume, then, that the only entrance coming from the south would be on Old Road.
Yes.
The only entrance for anybody going north would have to be turned on Old Road and come in from that way. That would be the only entrance to it, for people coming from the south.
Unless they put in a left turn.
Yeah, but
All right. Mr. Campos? No, I'm sorry. Mr. Baca's the architect, right?
Yes, sir, correct, yes.
All right. Did you design the landscape buffer, or someone else do?
Yes, sir, correct. No, we designed it ourselves in-house as well.
Can you tell us what your plan is for the buffer between the two properties out near the
Okay, between the residential property on the north side of us, okay, we're planning on putting our trees, as required, the caliper size, at a minimal, at, I believe it's every 20 feet, if I'm not mistaken, linear, which we're going to basically soldier them across. And then we've also got our landscaping shrubbery that we're going to be placing in between those trees. So, we're going to make it look very nice, as if it were going to be a street frontage landscape area. It'll just be on the backside of the building, but that's going to continue uniformly.
Is there anything solid there? Any fence or wall, or even solid vegetation?
There will be a, I believe it's going to be an eight-foot fence, privacy fence, put up between the property, and then, of course, we're going to have about three to five feet between the fence and the beginning of the landscape, so that we can have, of course, your landscape, you know, area to be able to maintain with lawn mowers, et cetera, whether they be rider or hand pushed. So, there'll be room between the fencing as well.
Okay.
And then, of course, we'll also have a drainage swale that will come down the center of that landscape buffer, so that it brings the storm water away from the residence, as well as away from the building, to then come to an inlet, which will then continue underground.
All right.
So, nothing will flow over.
All right, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Anyone else?
I have a question. Brian, I'm not sure if you can answer this question. Is there, is there any other issues to consider? Safety issues or any other issues to consider, other than aesthetic, when we're thinking about reducing that 15-foot buffer?
As far as the landscape buffer, the landscape buffer's there solely for aesthetics and, again, to separate different zonings.
Thank you. That was what I was looking for. Thank you.
And I understand as a general rule, structures that are on the ground, pavement on the ground, is opposed to something that comes up, or generally not considered obstructions in a normal setback. It's just that it's the landscaping of this spot that's creating the issue. Is that correct?
Typically, on our setbacks, that's true. This is probably that one exception where the flat work would be considered encroaching. But on our general other setbacks, yes, if it's an accessory structure versus
But on our general other setbacks, yes, if it's an accessory structure versus flatwork, we look at it a little differently.
One other question. On the Old Road, yeah, it's called Old Road. Would that be two-directional or one, or one-way?
No, sir. That's going to be a two-directional roadway, one lane either way. And we are planning on taking the existing, nothing but dirt and gravel road right now.
Yeah, it is.
All the way through, we're going to concrete, and we're going to make a driveway out of that, all the way, the length of our property. We will also then create on the shoulder, an asphalt, a soft shoulder, so that we can continue with some of the delivery trucks to come out without having to go down and, and erode the ditch there as far as, you know, any kind of storm or any kind of traffic flow through there. So, we're going to update and we're going to increase the, the wear and tear on that roadway there, as well as make it easier to get back to the properties behind us as far as access is concerned. So, anybody wanting to sell that property, anybody wanting to develop that property, would then take it from the end of our roadway and continue to develop. But it'll make it a lot easier to get back there.
I assume that'll be, when you pave, it'll be wider than what is there now?
Yes, sir, correct. It'll be a little bit wider, and we will regrade the ditches on either side to continue the storm water flow, so we will not disrupt that flow whatsoever. It will continue the location and direction that it is going. We may even be able to increase the volume a little bit, just depending on the configuration, configuration of the existing topo elevations along that flow line. So, as long as we can make it flow positively out there, we're going to do our best to make sure that it's nice, as well as riprap on both sides. Make sure that erosion doesn't happen and the grass Bermuda stays growing there, so that it looks a lot nicer than what it does right now.
Am I missing something? Could they actually access the facility then through Old Road as well as 518?
You will be able to somewhat, yes, sir, but it will be more of an exit flow due to the fact that our fuel truck, when it comes in, it's got a location. It can only drop on the right-hand side as far as emptying fuel. So, we have to have it coming out on Old Road, which is the only reason why we're widening that. But all the other trucks, vehicles, utility, otherwise, will be coming in from Old Road.
Yeah, your retail and utility, smaller utility vehicles, retail could actually access either through where you're showing these gas 18-wheelers enter or through Old Road.
Correct, yes, sir. Yes, so those driveways will be 24 feet wide, which is very, very wide, you know, to access both flow of traffic in and out at each driveway.
But the, the tankers have to access through 18.
Correct, yes, sir. Yeah, there, there's no other feasible way for them to be able to get into the property to maneuver around to get to the fuel tanks, to dump, and then to leave again. So, yes, sir.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Questions or comments? Anybody have any statements they want to make for or against?
Motion to approve the request for variance at 2210 South Friendswood Drive.
Second the motion?
All right, all in favor, please raise your right hand. And all against? The vote is four to one. The variance is approved. We need to back up a little bit on our vote run, or I guess we can do it separately. We have five, five factors that we have to consider to approve that the grant of the variance will not be contrary to the public interest. There are special conditions peculiar to the property involved. The literal enforcement of the ordinance would result in unnecessary hardship. The grant of a variance is consistent with the spirit of the ordinance, and the grant of the variance will ensure that substantial justice will be done. And I think we need to take a separate vote on those. All who believe that all five of these factors should have a yes, please signify by raising your right hand. Vote is four to one, so the disposition of the, the variance is approved. And y'all, if y'all want to sit through the rest of the meeting, you're welcome to. It won't be very long. And if you want to make your way out, you will not upset us. You can do as you please. All right, the next item on the agenda is consideration and action regarding approval of the minutes for the December 19th, 2017 regular meeting. Has everybody had a chance to look at those? Do I have a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second? All right, all in favor, raise your right hand, please. The three members who are here voted for it, so the majority, and that is approved. The, we have... Yeah, we'll recognize you in a minute, yeah. All right, next on the agenda is comment from board members. Is there any board members who have any statements they'd like to make tonight? Maybe some, something they would wish our council liaison to hear? Anybody have any comments?
Mr. Hill, I know that the board, with the loss of members, we had one member resign, and with the loss of Delvin, there's going to be new board seats required. Did you find out what the policy is on establishing or how recruiting? Or, and we're going to obviously have to have some more alternates? Were you able to find out?
I think the staff, correct me. You want to tell them? It's, there's a process which the staff goes through.
Historically, staff has worked with, we go through the applications that we have on file. The city secretary's office collects all the applications, and we have copies of them, so we'll go through them. Typically, we send recommendations to our council liaison, and we might send extra names up, and then it's up to the liaison to work with us to make recommendations. And then council, we take that to the mayor for his, the appointment, and then the council has to concede to the appointments.
I just have one question. Do we try to get all the areas of the city covered? I mean, is that even a consideration?
No.
Okay.
I think they're doing good to find people to volunteer anywhere.
Not big enough for districts yet.
I will, I would like to add that we, we intend to promote some of the alternates, if at all possible, into permanent positions and then replace the alternate positions.
That would absolutely be logical. They would have developed the expertise, so I would hope that would be the first consideration. But we, we're going to be short with a number of people. I mean, generally, we have at least three alternates. Is that correct? Three or four? And...
Yeah, I think this process, to me, is better than the way we pick PNC members. It's basically a lottery. It's a luck of a draw to get on PNC, and I, I think a lot of people have been standing around a long time wanting to get on there and hadn't been drawing the right number.
Maybe you should suggest to them that they try out for this group. I was originally asked to be PNC and said, "That's too time-consuming." And they said, "How about ZBOA?" And I said, "Yeah, well, not every other than a month. I can do that."
Yeah. Well, on another note, I may not, if we don't have another meeting in three months, I'm done. I'm term limited, so anyway...
I'm sad to say is a fact, but I'm sad to say that.
Well, it's been 12 years, and, and I'm ready to go. I've, yeah, but I, I think...
I thought I'd run for mayor myself.
Well, I'm term limited. But, no, it's for younger people and, and fresh ideas and all, so there's some good candidates running for mayor. I think we'll have a good mayor for the next three years. Either, either one that wins will be good. So, anyway...
I'm not going to miss it.
Maybe somebody will need an appeal, and I'll see y'all again. But if not, I've enjoyed working with you. Thank y'all for volunteering too.
Thank you, Mr. Hill.
I'll take it, Mr. Hill. All right, the next item is staff and board liaison comments. I think we already heard from the board liaisons. Are any staff or council members who have anything they would like to say?
Yes, sir. We do have two applications for later this month. So, I have those drafted to send out to y'all, as well as the procedure about moving up the alternates and picking new members. So, that'll come out in the morning.
Okay, will that be a March meeting or another February?
No, it's the, since today is a special meeting, our regular meeting for February will be the 27th.
27th, all right. All right. Any other comments from anyone? I hear a motion to adjourn. Second? All in favor, say aye. Aye. All right, the motion passes and meeting is adjourned. Thank you, folks.